Okay, then I will put you in that position. Good afternoon. This is the September 30th, 2019, meeting of the Salina City Commission. Before the meeting will be called to order, the mayor requests staff confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. Will you have the roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, we will see how much people were paying attention after last week's discussion, and now have the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Very good, I'm proud of you.
Never doubt the influence of one person. Today's meetings won't be terribly exciting from the audience's perspective because of the topics and the manner of discussion on the agenda. And I would like one fellow commissioner to consider item 3.1.
Okay.
I think she's -- you're gonna read 3.1, and then I'll do the --
Item 3.1, request for attorney-client privilege executive session with environmental counsel for the Salina public entities and the city's legal counsel regarding the subject of matters relating to scheduled mediation in the context of pending litigation in U.S. District Court relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base environmental matter.
How long would we like?
My best guess is 45 minutes to start. And if I could clarify as well, in addition to environmental counsel, Tim Rogers, Executive Director of Salina Airport Authority, will be intending to provide technical assistance as well as Martha Tasker, our Utilities Director, and W. PAC, our Finance Director.
Okay. Mayor Davis, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss the subject of matters relating to scheduled mediation in the content of pending litigation in U.S. District Court relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base environmental matter with environmental counsel for the Salina public entities and the city's legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 4573-19B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 3:18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to recess into executive session for the reasons so stated. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. I'm gonna call us back into regular session. We will likely need more time if the commissioners agree. Is there a motion? Yes. Mayor Davis, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subjects -- subject of matters relating to scheduled mediation in the content of pending litigation in the U.S. District Court relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base environmental matter with environmental counsel for the Salina public entities and the city's legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 4573-19B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at?
3:50.
At 3:50.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recess into executive session for an additional 30 minutes where the topic has read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. Okay, call the meeting back to session. Mr. Skryak will be back in here. We will open the meeting back into regular session and proceed with item 3.2.
Item 3.2, consideration and approval of Kansas Open Meeting Act violation, self-report to the Attorney General's Office.
And I thought there would be a longer lead-in, which would give Mrs. Gray. I realize this is the shortest lead-in of all. If you have any music, you can play.
There he is.
No music.
He's with us now.
Had to put you -- well, I guess it would put you on the hot seat, but I thought our lead-in would be longer to give you a few extra minutes to get down the hall, but for item 3.2, we are ready for your discussion.
I apologize. I took a detour around the hall. And we discussed this previously, and I've tried to provide considerably more detail in the staff report that's in this packet. The item relates to the Kansas Open Meeting Act requirements for notice of public meetings. And at the highest level or the generalist summary of that, it may seem a little counterintuitive, but statute doesn't require public notice be published or posted. What it requires is the individuals that request direct notice of a public meeting be provided that. We have some mechanisms in place, have had for quite some time, where we maintain that list, and we allow for some boards and commissions. We're working on giving the website to reflect all boards and commissions where individuals can sign up, self-subscribe to an email list, and then self-unsubscribe from that email list, and that's the basis -- or one of the bases is that staff maintains a notification list. So with respect to the city commission, that is the case, that's what we do. As it relates to the joint city-county meeting, the public notice and press release was distributed, but by error on the part of staff, the individual notice to that distribution list was not sent out, which then was the basis of the Open Meetings Act violation that we discussed last week. So if you'd like me to, I can go into greater detail of the statutory provisions that I kind of tried to summarize in my staff report. But the culmination of last week's conversation was for you to instruct staff to prepare a self-report of that violation and submit it to the Attorney General's Office. So Attorney Greg Bankston, following that meeting, he indicated in the meeting he'd inquire as to the process by which the Attorney General's Office would like to do that, and he did that. So what you have now is a resolution and a communication that were prepared in a combination of response to the direction you provided last week and the feedback from the Attorney General's Office. So Resolution 1977-46 is intended to be responsive to your request that we repair a self-report, and then there's also the attached correspondence that would go with that. The mayor would sign the resolution. The resolution instructs me, as the city manager, to execute or sign the actual self-report. The other thing that I would tell you is, you may have noticed it on today's agenda, but in an effort to try to identify systematic changes that might help avoid problems like this beyond just additional conversation and reliance on human intervention, I guess, we have added to the agenda an item to try to formalize confirmation of that notice has been distributed. So, you know, ideally, the scenario is that staff confirms that it was distributed. In the event that that actually calls the question at the outset of the meeting, then you'd be left with the alternative of adjourning the meeting because notice wasn't provided. And in the event that, you know, staff incorrectly confirms that notice was provided and come to find out that it wasn't, and at least as the governing body, and ultimately, the mayor is the one that technically is held responsible, you've attempted to do your due diligence in getting that confirmation before you proceed, which hopefully at least shows good intent on your part. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Well, the new process of asking if it's been made, you know, if we've met the Kansas Open Meetings Act notice, will that be done at all, city?
Yes, that's my intention.
As far as other boards and?
In fact, I think the last time that this came up was the strategic planning session of the city commission in 2018, and there was conversation at that time. My intention is to take the information that's been provided as part of the staff report and then some, and provide guidance to department heads and staff liaisons to boards and commissions, and then as part of that rollout, also then roll out an amended approach to agendas.
And I know it's hard to get all boards together and stuff for training, but I know that Kansas League of Municipalities has some material for coma and corps. I wonder if it'd be effective to distribute that to anyone that serves on a board, at least.
Well, we've been looking at our approach to training as well, and in all honesty, with the lack of attendance, what I've been trying to do with staff is identify both an in-person presentation and then videotape that presentation so that, you know, we could make it available and ask board members that didn't attend to at least affirm that they viewed the training. We've reached out to the Attorney General's Office and the League of Kansas Municipalities about training, and they might be able to provide, and whether we could videotape it. Ironically, I think they have to allow us to videotape it by the Kansas Open Meetings Act, but nonetheless, there's some reluctance about that information becoming stale. The League of Kansas Municipalities copyrights all of their publications, so it'll be $75 for one of those two publications per person, so I think we're trying to come up with a way that's a little bit more internal, a little bit more customized, I guess. We definitely want to be sure to cover the topics appropriately, but trying to build that in-house approach. Actually, staff, if you're familiar with Scouts and 2D leadership training, they have an approach where you watch the video and you then have to take a five-question quiz at the end to demonstrate that you picked up the main themes. Staff's looked at that. We've struggled to find a cost-effective provider that could do that. That was my vision at the outset, as kind of a fallback, I think, were to preparing the video and then asking those that don't attend training to affirm that they watched the video. And it would be beyond just Kansas Open Meetings, open records. It would be quasi-judicial, it would be bylaws, there'd be a number of topics to be covered.
Our ethics policy would fall into that as well?
Yep.
I think the only thing I got is, this can't happen again. I mean, this is something, I mean, training, no matter what it is, I mean, I think this is the last time we need to have egg on our face. I mean, this is--
And I can't argue with you. You know, given all the players involved, I didn't anticipate it was coming, that's why I keep referring to it as purely human error. It's not for a lack of knowledge about the topic, and that's why we're trying to find procedural systemic ways to kind of have boot and belt and suspenders approach to this going forward.
And the other step that I'm gonna take and suggest it for those who follow me would be to have the position of mayor listed on the recipients of the notifications for any city commission meeting, just as if we were not sitting on this board, but just as a reminder that the notification was sent out.
And I think that's wise. I can tell you, being on the distribution list of a number of those, at any given point, off the top of my head, can't discern whether I -- what I recall was this week or the week prior or the week prior to that. I think the step of staff knowing that they're going to be asked at the outset of the meeting was the best thing I can come up with as a way to take it to the next level, essentially.
All right, any further questions?
I just have a couple. When we have a situation where we're calling a special meeting, obviously, something that I've become attuned to, because I did sign up for the city commission email list, is I start checking late in the afternoon on Thursdays, because I know the later that it comes out, potentially, you know, the more things that might be on there, and I start to think about somebody having to stay late and get it posted. How far in advance do you post notice of a special meeting, i.e., the minute that it's established, can we go ahead and send out that notification? Or is there something statutorily that limits us to waiting three days beforehand? If we know about it two weeks ahead of time, can we send it out?
There's no statutory limitation, however, there is notice in general, and then there's provision of the agenda. And so until the agenda is completed and distributed, we haven't fulfilled all of our obligations. We could do it as, you know, as soon as we know, we could provide notice, but if there's an agenda associated with that meeting, we'd have to follow up with additional notice.
Okay, okay. I just had a couple of questions regarding our response to the Attorney General's Office. The last paragraph of that document reads, "As disclosed in the city's April 24th, 2018 response to a previous unrelated Kansas Open Meetings Act complaint, the city experienced a similar scenario that described above in relation to a February 22nd, 2018 city commission strategic planning meeting." And I was a little bit taken aback to read that. How did we -- we didn't address it, to the best of my knowledge, with a self-report at that time. How did we address that? What was in that April 24th response? Was that handled by staff? Did, I mean--
The April 24th response, well, Greg may as well speak to it in greater detail, but the April 24th response was related to Kansas Open Records Act complaint, and this item was disclosed in some of that conversation. So it wasn't directly related to the February 22nd item. It was the open records, open meetings response that we were asked to provide.
That was the challenge to the redactions in the open records documents between the city and the chamber's correspondence.
Well, that was actually in response to the open meetings--
Yeah, you're on, sorry.
That segment was actually in response to a question that was posed by the Attorney General as a result of the complaint alleging violation of an open meetings or an Open Meetings Act violation. The question was, have there been any other complaints within the last, I believe it was, three years? So in that response, although it had not been formally, there was not a formal complaint on that matter, at the time that we made that response, we, in an effort to make an absolute and full disclosure to the Attorney General, in that it fell within that timeframe about which they were inquiring, we simply made note of that instance where that was the, there was no agenda scenario, and as a result, the notice did not go to those who had requested that. The point here was to make sure, I mean, I wouldn't expect Assistant Attorney General Mendoza necessarily to remember that point in that prior disclosure. The point was here again to make a full disclosure of that, yes, this was a scenario that we had dealt with previously, thought we had dealt with, had disclosed in the prior response, and just making that connection so that there was not any question that we were making a full and complete disclosure in what we were representing in this self-report.
But it wasn't a separate, it was not a separate disclosure that stands alone like this disclosure would. I mean, it was a recount, or it was a summary of a potential past violation, not an actual resolution signed by the governing body and submitted on its own, as on its own status. It was included in that previous report when asked, when prompted, had we had any violations in the previous three years?
The question was not whether we had had any violations. The question was whether we had had any complaints.
Complaints.
And although it was not a formal complaint, certainly, the citizen that had called it to our attention, and as I recall, that was even in anticipation of the session, that it was simultaneous that day with the event that occurred back in 2018 in association with that strategic planning session. So the question was not violations, the question was, had there been any complaints? So the thought was, then, that we, in the spirit of full disclosure, made them aware of that circumstance, given the relationship between the phenomena, if you want to call it that, that occurred in that earlier situation, and the correlation between that and this same scenario where the notice, the system did not result in the generation of a notice, felt like that was prudent to make sure the Attorney General was aware of that as they analyze this self-report.
But there was, the approach we're taking today in terms of a resolution was not, formal action to that extent was not taken as it related to the February 22nd item.
Gotcha. And so if we hadn't had that follow-up open records redactions challenge, I'm assuming that because the citizen, who I think is here today, because the citizen didn't file a complaint with the Attorney General's Office, and obviously, we'd gotten to the end of April and we hadn't self-reported, I'm assuming that in the absence of having had to deal with that open records challenge, we would have probably not dealt with it at all, then? It would have just--
That predates me as your city manager, and it's hard for me to respond.
Yeah.
But I know there was quite a bit of conversation about how that came, how that transpired. I think the conversation was focused on the cause of the error and the solution. I don't recall deliberative, deliberate conversation about self-disclosure either way.
The, I think that's an incorrect assumption.
So we would, so your feeling is that we would have self-reported after April 24th in the absence of having been made to respond to the open records request or open records challenge?
Commissioner, you're asking me to respond to a number of--
Hypothetical?
--of circumstances that the--
Well, I guess I'm frustrated, because you just said that you didn't think that it would have gone, you know, that it would have gone unremarked upon or whatever, and so does that mean we would have, at some point, self-reported that other open meeting violation?
In the earlier situation, from my perspective, this is just my perspective, we had a situation, as I recall, the, and I would certainly welcome Ms. Ratzleff to correct me or help me recall the particulars of the incident relating to the strategic planning session. As I understand, there was recognition that day that you had not received the notice, which at least enabled access to the information that enabled you to be available or participate that day. If the challenge is that, is the question, why didn't we self-report in that earlier instance? Is that what it boils down to?
It does, because I'm looking at correspondence here. I believe Ms. Ratzleff notified us during the strategic planning session itself. She raised the question about notification, and then, bless her heart, she sent follow-up emails dated on February 25th and then on March 5th about it, and, you know, I guess my question is, obviously, it was important to her, and she followed up on it and pursued it, and I just want to apologize to you that I did not know about self-reporting. Because to me, the fact that we didn't address it until April 24th, Joan, indicates that we probably didn't have any intention on addressing it whatsoever. So I just want to, I want to apologize to you for that, and let you know that I'll be cognizant of the fact that it doesn't have to be a private citizen that submits violations to the Attorney General's Office. So, thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public?
Norman Allen, Salina. Actions have consequences, and this seems to be a problem here in the last recent history. What I want to know is what is the consequences to the people who are responsible for this? There should be at least a letter of reprimand put in somebody's file. Somebody should lose their job. Somebody should go to jail, because if you make a misstatement, we seen Michael Cohen back in Washington, D.C., he went to jail for making an error. Maybe this whole commission should resign. For confidence, restore confidence to the people that you're responsible to us citizens.
I think there is a difference between making a misstatement knowingly and making an error. I'm not going to worry about the consequences right now, because that's out of my hands. So we don't, I don't need to deliberate that, because we're not the ones who are going to decide the consequences.
In the future? As Mr. Hay said, you need to address this so it doesn't happen again. So what is gonna be the punishment?
Those are two different items. Punishment does not address the fact that it won't happen again. You heard, we're taking steps to lengthen each meeting probably by 30 seconds to make sure that the announcement has been sent out, and if the answer to that question is no, then that meeting won't occur. People will just be sent home. I'm gonna have myself signed up to receive the clerk's notification of any city commission meeting, and I would encourage the next mayor to do the same. In fact, all five commissioners could do the same.
This is an ongoing habit. It needs to stop.
Any other questions or concerns?
John Blanchard, 250 South Ninth Street. Couple of things. First of all, what I've witnessed here today and what I read, that you read out of the letter to the Attorney General, I find a few things that are very disturbing. Commissioner Hay, once again, I appreciate your comments, but the problem is, we've all just learned, and I'm curious, is today, sitting here right now, the first time you've heard that you violated the coma and could have self-reported but didn't? Because Mr. Bankson wasn't, didn't fully answer the question, but my question would be this: Who does the city attorney work for? Okay? And who does the city manager and the-- And who does the city manager and the deputy city manager? Mike Scragg pushed it off onto the former city manager. He was at that meeting. He knew what took place. He knew, he, he knew the city violated coma. It's your responsibility, it's their job, and you knew enough to address it and, and answer truthfully in the response to the Attorney General's question in the coma complaint that I filed and that they had asked you for clarification on. The bottom line is, is on February 22nd, or whatever that date was, 2018, the city commission violated the Kansas Open Meetings Act exactly in the same fashion that you violated it on September 16th, 2019. The only difference is, is that people came up here publicly and stated it on cameras and everything else, as opposed to back then, where everything was done off-camera and nobody knew about it, and staff, according to your packet today and the letter that's going to the Attorney General, staff took care of that. I feel for you guys, and this is a part where I'm, if, if, if I were in your chair, I would be upset, because what you have is you had staff who fell down on the job, not purposely, but they fell down on the job. And then you know what? They never told you that they fell down on the job. And Commissioner Hay, you're mad? You have a right to be mad. You have staff and your city attorney, who is your attorney, who didn't tell you that you have, that you, that the complaint that you received had merit and given you the opportunity to self-report on that coma. I'll tell you what, not going to tell you what I would do, but I'm pretty sure I'd be making a motion to go into the executive session to discuss personnel issues of non-elected staff. So, I, you know what? You represent us, and they work for you. Okay? This is embarrassing, and the fact that you guys are just finding out about a violation that happened 18 months ago ought to make every single one of you angry. Because it's not your fault that you, that, we should have learned from February 2018. You didn't have that opportunity, because you didn't know about it. You could have put all these precautions into place at that time, so September 16th, you would have never violated. And like Commissioner Hodges said, I think that if we hadn't had to put something in the disclosure to the AG, this, this thing would have never come to light at all. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
I do have a follow-up question, not from Mr. Blanchard, but more from Mr. Bankson, because it's a question I've asked in, in the past, I think, in executive session, and that is exactly, I don't understand the chain of command vis-à-vis your role with the governing body. Are, are you responsible, or, or do you respond to us, or do you respond to staff? Because I think, as I made clear the other time, I asked you, our, our needs and our perspectives don't always align. So who's, who's your client?
My client is the organization.
Okay.
The City of Salina.
Okay.
As a municipal corporation.
Okay.
And it's, through its various constituents. The governing body is one of those constituents, obviously at the top of the pyramid, if you will. So to the extent it is a matter that relates to the role and function of the governing body as a governing body collectively, then that is my primary obligation.
Okay. Thank you.
If it is dealing with administrative matters, as is most often the case, working with staff, then generally speaking, that's going to be with the primary obligation to the city manager's office, and of course, being of service to the, to the various staff members that might call upon me, or call upon us. The thing, if I may, Mayor and Commissioner Hodges, in further response to your question and some of the statements that have been made, I can't deny being somewhat, the details of the events of the day and the circumstances with regard to the planning session. I can't recall specifically enough to say, you know, this happened, this happened, this happened, that day. I do know that we've learned, and I was, I was not a participant in that, understandably, in that strategic planning session. It wasn't anything so much legal of, of a legal nature, and that doesn't, I don't mean that changes anything. It's just why I, I don't recall some of the details on the point-by-point developments as the day occurred. At that point in time, rightly or wrongly, I was aware that, in the final analysis, that notice did not go out to the list, to the persons on the list. Rightly or wrongly, I, given the circumstances, as I understood them at the time, I did not, in my mind, think it was a matter that warranted a self-report, or I would have asked for the opportunity to speak with you about that in executive session and given you the, that, describe that option and discuss that with you. If that was a mistake, that was a mistake on my part. I don't know that I'm the one to judge that. That was my assessment of the situation at the time, and you are correct, or Mr. Blanchard is correct, I did not take you through that process. I can say, and I think it, well, there's no question, but what, in this situation, given the circumstances, given the details, and upon learning that we had had the scenario again, I can look Mr. Blanchard or anyone in the eye and say that there was a motion that I had prepared, it was presented to the city clerk before the meeting, requesting the executive session. I, in my mind, felt like this was a situation that warranted your consideration as to a self-report, and we know the outcome that, of that conversation. Then when trying to appropriately assist in the composition of that self-report, it was my recommendation, still is, that reference was made to that prior scenario. So again, as I said, as the, as the Attorney General's office analyzes this scenario, that they had that information included in that prior report. If I mishandled or did not provide you with advice that you would have liked to have had in that earlier scenario, that is entirely on me. And I apologize for that, if that was a error in judgment on my part.
If I could add to that, I'm having to work off of recollection, but my, my recollection is that it all kind of came to light mid-morning of the strategic planning session. I know there was conversation, phone conversation back to the city manager's office, and my sense is that the, it came to the city commission's awareness that there was a required notice that wasn't provided. Now, was that a formal action item? No, I don't believe it was. Was it formal to the point of a coma violation and we need to decide whether we want to self-report? I don't think, I don't think it was handled that formally. It kind of played itself out that morning, staff responded to it, but again, I'm, I'm working purely off of recollection. And so, you know, I, for Mr. Bankson to own all of that, I think is too, too much on his part. It was collaborative on the part of at least staff in terms of what, what's the requirement? What happened, what was supposed to happen compared to what should have happened? And I think the, at least, that, that conversation occurred. I, I think that got disclosed to the city commission as part of that conversation, but it was nowhere near as formal as what we prepared for you today.
So the two viol, I mean, actually, we want to call them violations or whatever, so the one is no different from what we had before. So what would have happened if Ms. Ratsliff wouldn't have came forward, the last one, at this last one, and said, "I didn't receive this stuff, it's a coma violation"? If she wouldn't have came forward, would we have just not said anything about it then? I mean, I guess where I'm, I'm coming from too, and I'm not going to take sides on anything, but I had no idea at that time that that was a violation. I would not have any idea that this was a violation again, the second time, unless it was brought up, that it was a violation.
Right. And the only thing, the only thing I can say with confidence about the last time is, coming out of that, there was considerable conversation about what is the requirement? Where did we fail and what is the solution? And that, you know, in the information that you have and in the statement that's drafted for the Attorney General's office, the intent is to communicate that, you know, following that, the, trying to find it back here, but that there was an effort made back then, and the point that's trying to be communicated as part of this communication is as a further preventative measure beyond what was done the last time, is the, the new approach to the agendas. So that doesn't directly answer your question, but that's all I know to tell you transpired at that time.
But if she wouldn't have brought that forward, Mr. Bankson would have had a prepared statement for us if she wouldn't have brought it forward, or is that, is that untrue?
Well, none of us, as we sat through that meeting over at the health department, had in, had any awareness that the notice had not been given. I don't expect anyone had any notice that the notice had not been given until Ms. Ratsliff spoke. It was certainly, but to, I guess to that point, none of us knew until, until that point, that it had not been given.
And I think it's, you know, when you look at something that can happen, you know, there's a difference between possibility and probability. This is a system that works most of the time. You look at all the meetings we've had, it's worked but twice, but we will never know that it, or have a reason sitting up here conducting business. It's certainly not forefront of my mind, right before a meeting, to check that. So, and I would always find out about that in retrospect, after the fact. I think the steps we're taking now will decrease significantly the likelihood that...
Well, I agree with you. I don't think the person who was supposed to send out the emails sat there and said, "I don't think I'll send these out and see what happens." I mean, that ain't the way it happened. I mean, it was a, it was a mistake, and a mistake, like I said before, it's a mistake that, you know, we just need to make sure it doesn't happen again.
I agree. Ms. Ratsliff, would you like to, see, moved up a little closer?
Yes, thank you. Joan Ratsliff, Salina. Glad we're having this discussion. It needs aired. And, you know, I, I don't have prepared comments, obviously, but that we're taking some technical steps to, you know, talking about training staff. That's what we need to do. I, you know, I really agree with that. But I think what, where this is coming from is a lack of a real heart for involving the citizens of this community, and I feel like I'm beating a drum that's broken out the bottom, because I've been saying this for a couple of years, that staff, and some staff do a great job at training their boards and so forth, and some don't, because they haven't got the training. And so if you've got, say, a staff liaison that's telling your board, "Well, it's just a study session, it's not a real meeting," and they turn away people because they're just a study session, or they don't send out a notice because, "Well, we don't send out notices when there's no agenda," well, it's all baloney. It's poor training. And it shows a lack of, in my opinion, my perception, and it's been growing this way over the last couple of years, it's a lack of heart to serve, and, you know, in a transparent manner, from staff and commission that is relying on staff and all too often only relying on staff and not hearing what other people have to say. So I'm ready to move forward with this, and I'd like to see some heart changes in our city government.
Thank you.
I don't, I'm sorry. Well, I guess what I would tell you, and I'm repeating myself, but rather than verbal conversation decentralized throughout the organization, my intention is very written formal communication to ensure that it reaches the points that it needs to within the organization, staff liaisons across the board, so that there is a consistent expectation, there's a basis of accountability, and we eliminate confusion on the part of staff and staff liaisons, so that we can be fully informed about the open meetings requirements and the manner in which the City of Salina organization intends to meet them. It's, it starts with a summary of, you know, the requirements along the lines of what's in the staff report that was presented to you. My intention is to format that a little bit differently. There's other issues. I mean, there's questions about can meetings be video recorded and, and those type of things, everything down to when there's noise in the hallway, you can't close the door. It's that level of detail, but it's not going to make it through our organization verbally or one by one. It's going to have to be more formal, and that's my intention.
I see Mrs. Ratsliff, but the, the one thing I did want her to be aware of is that after her February, or, excuse me, September 16th notice to us, we have, we were discussing it as a, as a, I had discussed it with Mr. Scragg, and, and it was going to be under other business, so we weren't trying to, you know, we weren't trying to put it under the rug. Perhaps we should have made it a, an agenda item, but it was going to be brought up under other business and, and discuss how we handled it as far as correcting our mistake. It was a mistake. We're all a team, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody on staff, and the thing we need to do is to improve how we do it and move forward. And that's, but I did want her to know that just because it wasn't on the agenda, it was going to be handled under other business at the September 23rd meeting.
Is there a date in the next, oh, I guess, six, seven weeks that we could set to discuss formal training of boards as an agenda item?
Certainly. Staff's been working on that. I hope to have more of a plan sooner than that, but yes, we can certainly do that.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Okay, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I approve Resolution Number 197746. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 197746. Any further discussion?
If I could just make a couple of, of comments, just because this has upset me a great deal, that we have managed to get a hat-trick between our coma and our cora violations in the last 18 months. We have two coma violations and a cora violation in terms of the redacted... We have two coma violations and a Cora violation in terms of the redacted material that was released. And you couple that with the fact that we, when we know, when somebody brings it to our attention that we have made a mistake, you know, we hide it under other business. We wait to see if someone notices or if someone's going to make a big deal about it. To me, this points to a pattern of behavior, and you couple that with the fact that we consistently lead the state in number of hours spent in executive session. I think that, I think this is perfectly consistent within our pattern of behavior. And I think that, I mean, it's incumbent upon us, we're having a great conversation now, but it's incumbent upon us to really make a change in how we train ourselves, how we train staff, how we train our other boards to make sure that we are complying with everything that we need to comply. Because I think Ms. Ratslove made a great point. You know, if you want citizens to engage and if you want them to participate, then, you know, you have got to be able, they've got to be able to trust you. And I really do not see any reason why, given the discussion today, why citizens should feel like they have confidence in us being transparent and being upfront with them.
I would disagree with you regarding the Open Records Act. That was a decision based on our best judgment at that moment. The Open Meetings Act is as close to pushing a button or not pushing a button. I think the Open Records Act was a much different situation. We acted deliberately based on the information that we had at that time and made a decision that we thought was right. Attorney General disagreed with us on just really one of the several points, but I would not put that in the same category as the Open Meeting Acts. But I don't think any of us up here would ever think that we could conduct business behind a screen here. Some of these issues are not easy to talk about. Some of these require advice from our city attorney on when we need to go into executive session. That's why we have an attorney sitting in the room. But there's no deliberate effort to hide what we do. Ultimately, you know, anything that we do and take action on has to be done in public. But we, a lot of our executive session meetings have been centered around our recent downtown development and involved items that contractually should be discussed in executive session. But I would not want a, an insinuation that this is our deliberate way of doing business because I just 100% totally disagree with that.
Mayor, if I may, a question for Commissioner Hodges, just to be sure that we're all together on this.
Mm-hmm.
Your reference to open meetings violations, were you referring to the executive session complaint? Or were you referring to the?
No, I was referring to the strategic planning session from February of 2018, the special meeting that was, the joint meeting with the county held a couple of weeks ago. And then the third item that I mentioned, the open records, which Mayor Davis referenced also, was concerning the letters that were heavily redacted. And I was not on the commission at that time, but I understood from those who were that that letter and its redactions were decided on outside of the governing body. The governing body didn't take its magic markers and redact that particular document. Staff redacted that document. And so, that, those are the three items to which I'm referring.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one correction on the resolution. Should it be approved, it should probably change vice mayor to mayor unless someone else wants to sign this acting as mayor. All right.
Yeah, and I just want the, our constituents to know that executive session is done for certain reasons, and it's to either deal with personnel or contract negotiations or litigation. Some of that stuff, we initially have to meet behind closed doors, and I won't apologize for that because I believe it's something that needs to be done. And I guess the question is, if a commissioner does not feel comfortable, they don't have to attend executive session, would that be correct?
That would be correct. It's not a good situation, of course, to not have the full participation.
What should a commissioner do if we are in an executive session and he or she does not feel like we are complying with the act itself?
Well, I think in that scenario, the individual commissioner is certainly at liberty to leave and take whatever action they deem appropriate as a result.
Thank you.
Just procedurally, would that leaving the meeting be tantamount to declaring or analogous to a conflict of interest? Or is that just a matter of free choice to not participate in that portion of the meeting?
I would think it would be a matter of individual discretion on the part of any commissioner. Obviously, you all are under a general obligation to participate, and, but if there's a point in time at which a commissioner is concerned with ongoing participation, I think it's his or her prerogative to leave.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7746. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five nothing. Thank you. And we have another, Item 3.3, request for attorney-client privilege.
Actually, I have some public portion of that report to provide before that.
All right. Thank you. Should we have the?
Yes, please.
The item read by the court, please.
Item 3.3, Expo Center Lease Discussion and Deliberation.
Thank you. Mr. Skrag?
As I believe you know by now, there was a joint meeting with the city and county commissions on September 2016, September 16th at the Health Department Conference Room, and it related to ongoing negotiations with the, with respect to leasing the Expo Center to the county and their proposed improvement, or again, I don't even want to say their proposed, but proposed improvements to the site. And so, as you may recall, there were, have been ongoing conversations about the river project and it surrounding the Kenwood Park site, that is one of the boundaries of the, of Kenwood Park. And we met onsite, we've walked the property, we've met with them about their intentions for improving the site. We expressed concern about improving it aesthetically and keeping with the improvements to the Tony's Pizza Event Center, as well as the anticipated river projects. They, at one point, asked us for feedback about what we had in mind, to the point that we hired our consultants for the Ridge River Project and asked them to prepare plans and cost estimates. We presented those to the county commission. And in open meeting of the county commission, there was feedback from horse and horse show enthusiasts about those improvements. And the county then ultimately indicated that they wanted to consult, a consultant on their own behalf, which was done, and they shared some of that information with us. They, as far as the conversation transpired, they proposed some lease terms, both in terms of the duration of the lease and terms, and there was ongoing feedback about, you know, what's expected in ways of aesthetic improvements. I personally met with the county administrator at the time and deputy county administrator onsite, and we brainstormed some improvements. They then ultimately hired, I'm struggling for the name of the firm, GH2 Architects, and shared their proposal or their design at that September 16th meeting, along with cost estimates. Cost estimates for base work as well as some alternates, and there's quite a bit of discussion amongst the governing bodies about phasing and timing. And you'll see that in my staff report, I went back and listened to the video and provided you a verbatim transcript of that conversation because I didn't want to mischaracterize it. But essentially, Chairman Vendrickson indicated there had been some discussion about possibly bond financing improvements, and Chairman Vendrickson asked, I'll cut to the chase here, if we agree to bond this, are you willing to give us the lease now? And County Commissioner Leese inquired 30-year lease because that had been part of the conversation. Chairman Vendrickson kind of provided a non-verbal response of a shrug combined with, you know, raising his hands to Commissioner Leese, indicating not really sure, that's what we're trying to figure out, I think. So, we kind of left that conversation with the expecta-, and the number was 5.7 million for the base improvements, not the alternates. So, while it wasn't summarized and recap necessarily, I think we left that conversation with, the county had asked the City Commission if they bond financed 5.7 million dollars of improvements, has indicated will we enter into a 30-year lease. And so, you as individual commissioners were kind of looking at each other, trying to figure out, how do we respond exactly? In fact, I think the mayor said, "Well, we're all looking at our attorneys to figure out the answer." But kind of left with a homework item of, can we pull this together for September 30th today, thinking that that might be an opportunity for another joint session to finalize it. I had conversations with county staff about they'd be discussing it the following morning with their county commission, and was asked, "What do you need from us?" I indicated just confirmation that that 30-year proposal was acceptable to the county commission, and we had some conversation about timing of the bond financing and clarity on that. And so, that kind of transpired over the next week, week and a half, and culminated in the correspondence that's attached to my staff report that is the most recent proposal from the county commission. Trying to put my hands on it. Dated September 24th, and they indicate, in exchange for a 40-year lease agreement, they would improve the aesthetic and functional aspects of the livestock and expo center by committing to spend no more than 5.7 million, accomplishing the items listed in the proposed master plan. Upon execution of the agreement, the Sling County would begin immediately with the improvement in constructing of the enclosed warm-up arena. The remaining improvements would begin later than 2023. Sling County is cognizant of the forthcoming river renewal and proposes any site work along Kenwood Drive not be accomplished in the initial construction to allow appropriate coordination. As the landlords of the property, being the City Salina, Sling County asks that the city relocate the existing overhead utility lines on the property, and Sling County has no plans for the rodeo arena as part of the proposed improvement. So, slightly different than the conversation that took place on the 16th, that communication came in last Thursday or Friday, I believe, and so that's the proposal that's before you at the moment. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that might be appropriate in open session, but we've placed the possibility of an executive session on your agenda just because this is both an attorney-client privileged matter and kind of an ongoing negotiation, rather than, say, in response to that conversation, we've drafted a lease for your execution. We kind of have a counteroffer that bears further consideration.
Any questions, comments? What I'd like to do, if it'd be appropriate, would be, since we might be in executive session for a while, are there any comments or questions or concerns from the public? Or any ideas that might be of advantage? Either side, actually, during negotiations. All right. Hearing that.
Yeah, I guess, sorry, come in late. I guess my only question is, and I did watch the meeting, I wasn't there, the significant differences in the letter that we were presented are the length of the lease, 40 years, as opposed to, I think we had been talking about shorter period, 30. And who's going to relocate the utility lines, or if they're going to be relocated.
Yeah, I think there's one item that I'm not sure if it's intentional or unintentional, but the phrasing to spend no more than 5.7 million places a cap on the expenditure but doesn't represent a minimum commitment. Or I think the conversation was 5.7 million as a fixed amount previously.
Thank you.
If we go into executive session, how long do you anticipate?
Good question.
Hmm, 30 minutes?
And if we could put a five-minute recess in before those 30-minute start.
Okay. Mayor Davis, I move, I request for an attorney-client privileged executive session regarding the subjects of negotiations with Sling County relating to Expo Center lease agreement. I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subjects of negotiations with Sling County relating to the Expo Center lease agreement with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 457319B2. We will also take a five-minute break, so we will resume the meeting in this room at 5:25.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to take a five-minute recess and then convene an executive session from 5:55, I'm sorry, 4:55 to 5:25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five nothing. Making progress, but have a little more progress to make.
Okay. Mayor Davis, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss the subjects of negotiations with Sling County relating to the Expo Center lease agreement with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at?
5:42.
5:42.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reconvene an executive session for 15 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five nothing.
Hey, Mayor, is that going to make any decisions following?
That probably, yeah.
That always is not, is not?
It's possibility.
Definite maybe.
It's a definite maybe. That was the. Okay, call the meeting back into regular session. We've had good discussion, and there may well be action to be taken.
Did you have a comment you wanted to add?
No, go ahead, and then I, if we need any clarification, I'll follow up.
After discussion, I would like to direct staff to prepare a letter to Sling County outlining the proposed issues with the, to be addressed in, with the lease with the county. First of all, we would be open to a 30-year lease based on a minimum investment of 5.7 million or the completion of the projects listed in the proposed master plan. We would also like a schedule from them of the dates they anticipate the completion of the proposed master plan. We would also want to cancel the current lease at the time that the new lease is executed, and that neither the city or the county at this time will relocate the existing overhead utility lines.
But does, but we do.
Yes.
Second.
I won't attempt to recite that as the clerk feels, though she has that. Thank you. It's moved and seconded to send back to the county commission our response to their letter concerning the lease at the Sling County Expo Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Is there, we don't really have another business listed here, but is there any other business?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.[1659.91]